I'm ready.
You're ready?
I am ready.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can you please do roll call?
Sure. Chair Carmelo Ocuendo.
Present.
Vice Chair Philip Landry.
Here.
Russell Alexander.
Present.
Nanette Douglas.
Here.
Dawn Grisby.
Present.
Dawn Streeter, excused absence. Daisy Snyder.
Here.
We have a quorum, sir.
First order of business is the approval of the minutes of May 21st. If anybody's read the minutes and has a motion, can I please get it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 21st.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes, sir. Okay, first order of new business. Ordinance number 2024-090R.
Good evening, this is Tisha Manning, zoning manager for the city of St. Cloud, from the case that was just called, that applicant has withdrew their application. So the case will not be heard and it will not be moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will be moving to ordinance number 2024-37 CPA 23-00016. And we'll be reading two ordinances together, three of them actually, I mean, two of them, which is also ordinance number 2024-40 PUD 23-00006.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Bernice Gonzalez, Senior Pla- Principal Planner, Community Development, sorry about that. Before we begin our presentation, we would like to read a correction into the record. The applicant and agent name have been publicized incorrectly and we would like to take a moment to make that straight. The applicant should be, should read Eden Living Development Services LLC. And the agent should read RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. All right, so, um, we'll be presenting ordinance 2024-39 and 2024-40 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PUD rezoning and preliminary master plan, also known as Eden Living Beauty. The request affects a parcel that totals approximately 23.28 acres located at 1651 South Narcusi Road. The current future land use is low-density residential. The applicant is requesting a consideration to amend the future land use to medium residential and the zoning from agricultural to planned unit development. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas as the, um, future land use map and zoning map would demonstrate, and it has no adverse impact on facilities. The PUD zoning on the 23.28 approximate area acres would facilitate the development of 216 single-family built-to-run dwelling units with a total maximum density of 9.27 dwelling units, as shown in the concept plan. This is our zoning map and future land use map. So there's, it's not an isolated district, there are other districts with these designations adjacent to the parcel. Okay, this is the preliminary master concept plan. And at this time, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2024-39, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for case file number CPA 23-00016, and recommending approval with conditions for ordinance 2024-40, the PUD 23-00006. The following conditions will apply to the approval of the preliminary master plan. It must demonstrate compliance with open space allowances and calculations, demonstrate creative design and usage of the ponds to have access to the fifth credit of the 50% of the pond area towards open space. It shall show acreage and square footage and it must be clearly identified. The PMP must demonstrate connectivity to adjacent property in consistency with policy 1.5.7 of the Comprehensive Plan and Section 6.2.1C of the Land Development Code. The PMP must provide compliance with residential architectural standards as have been provided in the PUD ordinance 2024-40. Condition number five, it must provide a minimum project boundary buffer of a total combined height of planting of 16 to 18 feet, composed of three large trees, one medium tree, and 15 shrubs per each 100 linear feet. Some of these conditions are, all these conditions and other conditions have been added to the ordinance and the PMP shall ensure compliance before being approved. The planning commission requested action, it's the approval of the ordinance 2024-39 for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the approval with the conditions stated for ordinance 2024-40. The applicant is present tonight and they prepare a presentation. If there are any questions for staff at this time before the applicant's presentation, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
You said other conditions, what were the other conditions?
PUDs are intended to be held to a higher standard of unique and quality of development. We've included specific conditions for architectural standards, materials, location of mechanical elements like air conditioners, parking and such.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant making up?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Noto with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, address is 111 North Magnolia Avenue, Suite 1350, Orlando, Florida, 32801. Thank you for having us this evening, thank you to staff for getting us here this evening to the planning commission meeting for this recommendation and council. I'm going to go through a number of slides this evening that talk about the project, get you familiar with build-to-rent, it's a unique type of housing product that's starting to pop up throughout the state, so I'll help describe what that is in general and then also talk about how that will lay out here on the project site. So as staff said, project location, just over 23 acres, one mile north of 192. The current zoning is agricultural, the future land use is low-density residential. As staff said, we're requesting a rezone to PUD and a future land use amendment from LDR to medium-density residential. The project, which would be Eden Living St. Cloud, is 216-unit built-to-rent community. It's a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom cottages with onsite amenities. Built-to-rent, it's a new type of rental housing that is designed in a manner to where you have a standalone home with some amenities that come with having a standalone home. So these will not be fee-simple units, no one else will be buying them and renting them out, they will be owned and maintained by Eden Living Services. So it's not going to be something where there's going to be a plat where things will be subdivided out, it's all owned by the developer. So due to the unique type of housing product that it is, it allows residents to enjoy optimal privacy, they'll have their own fenced-in backyards, which is good for outdoor entertainment, and there are also unique community amenities such as a light resort-style pool and a state-of-the-art fitness center. So built-to-rent, and all the pictures that we have built into this PowerPoint are all from other Eden Living projects that are here in the state of Florida. So the images that you'll see are a good reference point of what you can anticipate to see from this project. It's an innovative form of missing-middle housing, if you've heard the term, it's gained a lot of traction in the recent years as the housing market has continued to inflate and then there's this kind of gap for folks that are looking to move on from maybe their first homes or their first rentals into something that's still affordable, not affordable housing as we know it as defined in the statutes, but something that they can afford on a monthly basis that may also not be a fee-simple home. Helps to increase the diverse housing stock within a community and in this specific case, it'll provide the city of St. Cloud with a unique rental product that is similar in nature and design to a traditional single-family community. As I mentioned, Eden Living has constructed multiple projects in Florida, here's a list of them on the overhead, one in West Melbourne, Jacksonville, Wildwood, and Port St. Lucie. We'd be happy to provide, if you're interested, website links to each of these communities to staff, so that way you can check out the websites and see how each one's designed, see what the amenities are, see how the sites function. And I'll cover a little bit of that tonight here as part of this project. So the first one is the, first item I should say to talk about is the Comp Plan Amendment. As staff said, we're requesting to go from LDR to MDR. The LDR allows for the zero to four dwelling units an acre, MDR gets us to 4.1 to 10, the maximum density based on the lot size of 232 units, but we are requesting the 216. The proposed project supports the residential landfill inconsistent with the policies that are outlined in the MDR future land use designation as staff detailed, and we, just as the applicant concur with the staff findings, went through 16 as they've noted in their staff report. It does increase the housing variety and unique product types within the city. The Comp Plan encourages mixed-density residential future land uses throughout the city, and I'll just note in the staff report it called out that there was a deficit of MDR in the city, so hopefully this type of project will help address that. And then the project also supports the Envision St. Cloud Citywide Master Plan. From the rezone request side of things, we're requesting to go from agricultural to PUD. One thing I wanted to note on this slide, it shows it best, I think, you can see the green portion that's just to the left of our project site where it has the big A, that is separate from our project. It's a piece of property that used to be joined with this property. I understand a number of years ago, the larger parcel came in for one development type or development project, rather, that 310-foot depth and the frontage along Narcusi is going to be a separate project that is not part of ours. We anticipate that'll be developed as commercial, but again, that is not part of our project. We are just doing the 23 plus or minus acres to PUD. On this slide, you can see a couple of images of the amenity packages that are offered, that will be offered in this project. Again, expansive community amenities centered with pool, active open space, neighborhood-wide sidewalks that will connect to off-site pedestrian infrastructure, will also connect to neighboring communities such as Lakeside at Satia that is being developed adjacent to ours, bicycle racks, and a community dog park. The amenity building will also feature workstations, fitness center, and venue space for community events. So when staff asked us specifically, you know, with PUD, go above and beyond, I wanted to bring attention to the different amenity packages that are going to be offered here on site. The architectural standards, which are not well shown on this slide, I will admit to you, these renderings were done early on in the process, we are going to update them to make sure they do meet city codes. By the time we get to city council, we will have updated renderings of what these units will look like. This is an example of the one-story and an example of the two-story, there will be no three-story units within this development. Again, it'll provide a unique and innovative housing experience that allows for a kind of more of a single-family detached living environment with densities and intensities that are not like traditional multifamily housing. I want to point out on these two pictures, you can see the top image, that is a fenced-in backyard, each unit will have that, and I'll note, one of the conditions that staff made sure we were to meet is we could not fence in the backyards if we were using the backyards to meet our open space requirements. As part of our revisions to our plans, we're going to make it extra clear that we are not going to be using those backyards to meet the open space requirements. Therefore, we do plan on having the fenced-in, the open space requirements will be met on other ways and that'll be clearly shown on our final master plan. And the bottom image is a typical kitchen layout and you can see the different finishes, very modern approach with the white cabinets, stainless steel appliances, the metal steel-looking door handles for the cabinets, and then the kitchen island there. So here's the preliminary master plan, I'll briefly walk you through this, we removed all the labels to try and make it a little less busy because it can get a little much when you try to call out every single thing on the plan. And this is the plan that's going to be updated as we move forward to city council because we clearly want to show how we're going to be meeting things like community connectivity to Lakeside at Satia, this original plan didn't contemplate that just because of the project type that it is. However, in talking with staff, working with the developer, we're going to ensure as part of the final master plan that those connections are shown and are done, and that'll include the pedestrian connections. What the colors show, so these are all of the different buildings, these are structures, the home structures that are shown onsite, the different shading indicates the number of bedrooms, the lighter the shade, one bedroom, get a little bit darker, two-bedroom, and the darkest is the three-bedroom. And you can see how they're kind of put throughout the site, they're built in cottage form where you have the, some of them have the main entrance off of the parking lot, some of them have entryways behind, just depending on how the site is laid out and how each building is laid out. We will have two access points, both on South Narcusi. Again, there will be connectivity to Lakeside at Satia, but the main access points to the project will be from South Narcusi. There will also be these other curb cuts installed here, one will go to Lakeside at Satia, the other is built here for the future development that will occur to our west. And then this other access point here provides access to our project as well as any future projects that may occur in the front. There will be sidewalks provided on these access points here that will connect to the existing facilities that are in South Narcusi. We did complete a traffic study and we will be installing turn lanes for both of these access points. The purple indicates the amenity center, what's not shown on the plan right here is the pool, but that's where the pool would go. You would have a dog park generally in this area, and then these buildings here, these smaller rectangles that you see within the parking lot are parking garages that would be available for rent. If you're a resident there, if you want to park your garage or if you have a lot of stuff, you can put your items in those garages. This is an aerial view of the preliminary master plan, this comes from a video, flyover video, that the applicant completed that we showed at the Neighborhood Information Meeting that was held earlier this year. So you could see, just for a reference point, here's South Narcusi, there's that northern main access point which will have a wet stormwater pond, and as you go and you can see the layout of the community here. Sorry. There we go. And this is looking west, so there's Turtle Creek right across the street. Lakeside at Satia would be surrounding us here, and again, this is an aerial view, just so you can see, here's the amenity center with the pool, our internal stormwater pond which would have sidewalk connections around, and then again, as I said, internal sidewalks from within. I think what this image shows well is unlike your traditional multifamily development, these are not three-to-five-story garden apartments, these are one- and two-story max individual cottages, one person or one family will live in one building. You're not sharing, you know, with roommates unless of course you need one, you have that option, and then you have your private yard space in the back. When it comes to the PUD, we of course concur with staff's findings, 1 through 16 is noted in the staff report, the project would increase the housing variety, unique community design, common open space and community amenities, and again, it supports the Envision St. Cloud Citywide Master Plan. We are doing our best to exceed the code minimums and bring a project that is above and beyond what the code requests, and we've done that through not only the expansive community amenities, but also the landscape buffers along the perimeter. We were given a medium-type buffer to meet at the request of staff, and we're going to do that, and we've actually increased the number of plantings that would be occurring every 100 linear feet, above and beyond what the staff minimum was, and you can see the cross-section of what that would look like here. That's for the majority of our buffers and we're going to go ahead and include that, I think we're looking to work towards including that along our main access point as well. Originally, it was just going to be along the main perimeter of the project, but we're going to pull that down, we're going to aim to pull that down to Narcusi as well. The community will also be professionally managed, all the prospective tenants will be required to have background checks, income checks and qualifications, there's a daily onsite management team and a maintenance team, and then no short-term leases will be allowed, only long-term leases. So again, this is not a situation where individual folks can buy a building and then rent it out, this is a professionally-run multifamily complex, a little more similar to what you'd, you know, consider seeing as a garden apartment, that's probably the one and only similarity between this project and those. We did hold a Neighborhood Information Meeting on March 5th of this year at Grace Community Church, we had four in-person attendees and six Zoom attendees. What the map is trying to show is everything that's highlighted here in green, those are all the mailers that were sent at the request of the city that we hold for this meeting. It was a 500-foot buffer, since it hit Turtle Creek, the entire neighborhood received it. And so again, we had the four in-person attendees and six Zoom attendees, we didn't receive any major comments, we had some, you know, that we would anticipate, concerns about traffic, concerns about the project itself, whether it would be a single-family versus multifamily, things of that nature, but we felt comfortable based on the comments we received that we could move forward with staff. That's all I have, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have or any questions that may come from the audience, Mr. Chairman, be happy to address them.
Is this supposed to be a gated community or?
It will not be gated.
Not gated? And you said both entries will be on, from Narcusi?
Yes, ma'am.
Both entries would be created at the same time?
Yes, sir.
What is your definition of long-term, six months plus or year plus?
I believe it's minimum six plus.
And the other communities that are in Fort Pierce and Melbourne, et cetera?
Yes.
Are, how long have those been in existence?
West Melbourne is recent, they're all relatively recent, well, West Melbourne, I believe, is the newest, and you can get there, just hop on 192 and take a direct shot there.
Which one's been around the longest?
The Jacksonville project.
How long, approximately?
Five years.
Five years?
Sorry, I'm sorry, five months.
Five months?
My apologies, my apologies, sorry.
What makes them get the designation of cottages?
As opposed to?
Like just being called a single-family house or?
Sure, sure, that's a great question. So, build-to-rent is such a new concept in housing that a lot of land development codes, and this is nothing against the city, a lot of land development codes haven't necessarily been updated to address what build-to-rent is. Multifamily in land development codes is typically defined in a certain manner with the number of folks that live within a structure, and you typically see building heights of three to five stories, something along those lines. So we are using the term cottage because it's not, it's also not necessarily a single-family dwelling that you would traditionally see where it has its own platted lot. So these will just be individual homes on one master tract, if you will.
But they are still single-family dwellings, so they're not like townhouses, they don't connect at all?
That's correct. Yeah, you do have, let me, let me pull to the master plan for just a moment. That's okay, I'll go to, uh...
It's just great marketing, it's a great word. It's fun, it's new, it's fresh.
Yeah, some of them may be, may be connected, however, these are not row homes.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not going to have four in a row, five in a row, things like that.
Have you guys presented any type of price points to anybody or?
Roughly, you know, depending on delivery, but again, sorry, not again, but it depends on delivery, but we're looking about roughly $2,000 to $3,000 a month depending on unit type and then what the market is at the time.
One, two, and three-bedroom units?
Yes, ma'am.
Ouch.
What's the ratio for parking?
It is two spaces per unit and then one space for every 10 for visitors, which is the multifamily requirement from code.
Turning lanes in both of the entrances?
Yes, sir.
Will there be any rules about occupancy? Because I'm just saying, rent to own, $3,000 a month, how many people are going to want to try to cram into one of those two-bedroom or three-bedroom units?
Oh, so you're asking how many people can rent one unit at a time?
Could be somebody on the application, but how many people are going to be allowed to be in that unit?
Sure, that's, that's a development restriction, I think I would need to get into a little more detail on that one. Do we have much more detail on max renters in the space? Yeah.
I'm just saying that if I lived around there and I started seeing that there were like eight or 10 people in a two-bedroom unit because it's affordable from, well, not really affordable, what, $3,000 a month for most people? I'm just, just bringing that point up.
Sure, we'll, we'll dig into that a little more and have a straight answer for council.
They might have a question like that too, so.
Sure, understood, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, but a nice presentation, very thorough.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we will be opening up for public comments if we have any. No public comments. Did you feel a bit of shit, ma'am? Come on up.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Nancy.
Bring the mic down, please. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? My name is Nancy Tru, you see, I live on Hawksville Lane, I live in the Preserve at Turtle Creek, which is directly across the street where this may or may not be being built. I do not recall getting any letters, I'm not saying you didn't do it, I'm just saying, I do not recall, and I texted a friend of mine as well who lives there, that there was a meeting in March regarding this, a town hall meeting, I don't recall that. But I know in 2021, there was another builder who wanted to build in the same area, they wanted to build town, apartments and townhomes, and y'all had rejected that and the developer moved on. But one of the things that developer did, because we were directly across the street, being friendly, actually called us. I personally spoke with the developer, and he was very kind, willing to meet with homeowners and tell us what was going on. That never happened in this instance, and I just want to, for the record, just to put that out there. The other thing is, I'm concerned as a homeowner and also on the board of the HOA there, what is going to happen to our home values? We have homes there, 400, that are selling for half a million dollars, $500,000, they're beautiful homes. I encourage you before you make a decision to please walk through our community and see what's there, and put in your mind, do I want this type of development across the street from where I live? I just think it would be better suited for all of us as homeowners to have another development there, homes to buy, or even townhomes, or a 50-plus community, something like that as opposed to rentables. I just feel that like you had asked a really good question, you know, you have one house and you may have on paper John Smith is renting it, but then you have John Smith and 10 cousins removed, I don't know how many times, that will be living in that house, or if that house is going to be used for some other things that may not be legal. So we have a concern, and I just wanted to put it out there for the record for y'all to please consider before you make a decision, that's all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Have they received any feedback from the current developers, the development that you've had in the different places? Have you received any feedback from those residents or the surrounding areas about how it's going?
Surrounding neighborhoods from other Eden projects that have been built, nothing that I could report on this evening, but could provide some more detail to council.
And also for the record, the applicant is here, so if you have questions, I'm sure staff and they would be happy to talk to you. So if you have questions, I'm sure staff and they would be happy to talk to you.
Any other questions, any more public comments?
Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. If you all want to see what the cottages look like, I do have an overhead that I can provide. The other thing I wanted to say on the number of people, because it's professionally managed, they have to list out anybody that would be living there and they can enforce that. So they can actually, because it's rental and not fee simple ownership, they can control that, whereas you can't when in ownership. So as a professional management company, they can address that concern.
Very good point, that is very true. You have to usually on all rentals list who's going to be in residence, how many and their ages, et cetera.
Correct.
Any other comments? We'll be closing the public comments. Any comments amongst yourselves before we take this motion?
I just want to generally say to everybody, I mean, there is a need for rental and, nice rentals in our town, it keeps growing. I would hope that it would be of high quality, that it wouldn't reduce anybody's property values, but we see the same thing happening near all of our homes, et cetera, so I, things are worth pointing.
I remember the project that was supposed to be there because I was on the board during that time. And we rejected it because of the heights. And that they would be able to look into people's yards and at least this will be less restricted. And they won't be able to see into their yards at Turtle Creek.
And even with it being a different style, I mean, like now, this puts it more compatible with being the type of community that's already there versus how apartments would advance.
I agree with what you're saying, but I, it feels like this is a rehash of that same thing in that this kind of opens the door for then that property between this and Narcusi to then have what we shot down back in 2021. Because now they can say, well, now we have medium-density residential here. Now we have, you know, X building height, I mean.
But was that, was that why it was or was it because it was three stories or et cetera?
That was the major concern during the last time, the height.
The height and, and the, and the density of population? Because you'd have a lot more people that could live there before.
I'm not a big.
But again, it was full ownership, which to Thacker's point is you wouldn't have that. You wouldn't be able to have fee simple, as many people as they wanted to have in there. This would be managed.
Those were apartments, those ones were going to be apartments.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I thought you said townhomes, ownership of townhomes.
I mean, in, in my eye, this is kind of like apartments as well because it's, it's full rental owned by a company. The only difference is that they're detached, that's really the only difference here, in my opinion.
They bought us a different product with a different height elevation and stuff like that.
And a different density, because I mean, you fit a whole lot more people when you're doing apartments at four stories high per square foot versus, you know, single-family dwellings. So it greatly changes the density.
It is, it is a slightly lower density, but I, I, I'm concerned about the traffic in this area. I mean, we've seen over and over everything that's coming into this area. The issue is traffic on Narcusi Road, right? And I would feel more comfortable if it was already connecting to Lakeside at Satia or if it had a connection to another arterial road and not just Narcusi. So that's, that's what kind of bothers me about this is that, you know, and I, I don't know that I trust the 93 cars at peak time. I mean, some of these traffic studies, I think, are a little bit skewed, but.
So that, even though it's a, it's a proposed rental community, if it was fee simple housing, you could still, with the, with the PED change, you could have the same amount of fee simple housing there too, right? Regular houses? So there's no?
There's no difference.
There's no difference.
No.
I just think it's kind of, we do need more rental product, but it's the affordability factor. You still can't, like, like, I got kids in their early twenties, they can't afford anything. They wouldn't be able to afford that because they're all, you know, at $2,000 a month. If they're making 40 grand, that's more than half of their income.
At least they're quality rentals.
The one thing I.
They're quality rentals and they're not RVs in backyards, but.
The one thing I can say is from this meeting and the last, we have a lot smaller turnout of people opposing.
I do have one more question, though, if I may, about the units that you have in Jacksonville for the last five months. Has that filled that unit, those units, are they all rented?
Right now, they're rented at 30%.
At 30%?
At five months.
And the same approximate rough idea of price point that you're thinking about for here?
Is that completely built out?
A little bit less completely built out, yes, yes.
They just haven't been ever filled.
Completely built out at 30% occupancy and approximately the same price points that you all were mentioning here.
Right, right.
That would be my only comment, is the price point scares me at rental for that, so.
Can staff confirm that this did go out to residents within 500 feet of the proposed amendment?
Zach Mary Segarra, Deputy Director. We, we cannot confirm that they actually did the community meeting because it's not a requirement from our code.
Well, I know, not, not the meeting, but the, the notices still had to go out.
We provided all of the, all of the documentation to the applicant. We provided all of the addresses. And they, and they provided us the evidence of the presentation, the sheet, the signing sheets and a copy of the notices as well.
A copy of the mailed notices?
The mailed notice, but whether they were sent out, that's the part that we cannot confirm. We gave them the buffer, we gave them the addresses and we received some of the evidence that they claimed that they mailed out.
Okay, thank you.
I actually live in Turtle Creek and yeah, received it and yeah, knew about the meeting in March. So I can't speak for every housing there, but I can at least speak that it existed.
Well, they had some attendees.
Yep.
Somebody got it.
Any other questions amongst yourselves?
Uh, yeah.
You can ask the question and fill the form out after.
Have we, we haven't, have we officially closed?
We will close the comments, Mr. Attorney.
You're asking if there's further public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. A public comment can still be made if the chair and the commission wish to receive public comment, but you're not here to answer questions from the public. They can ask questions of the applicant by way of making a, a comment which would yield a response from the applicant. But the commission is not here to respond to questions.
Since he's taken time to fill it out, we'll hear him.
So even, even though it's on, it's on Narcusi Road and there's a lot of traffic on Narcusi Road, there still is a rental shortage. There wouldn't be a better place to put it anyway.
True.
Come on up, sir. Yes, sir. Say your name and address, please.
Mike Truacy, Preserve at Turtle Creek, 1809 Hawksbill Lane. Minor point, there are two communities across the street. One is Turtle Creek, the other is Preserve at Turtle Creek. Two separate legal entities, but for the purposes, they've always been added together and conflated as just Turtle Creek, but that's inaccurate. My questions pertain to cottages. Is that a euphemism for single-family homes? Is it wood-framed construction? Is it block? Is it a standard two-story where it's masonry on the bottom, wood framing on the top? Is it on public sewer or private septic? And what about children in schools? Furthermore, traffic lights? It appears that the south entrance will be adjacent or opposite Preserve at Turtle Creek and the northern entrance will be at Turtle Creek. There are school buses on Narcusi Road that stop several times a day. I understand there'll be a separate entry or egress lanes, traffic lights, crosswalks. What additions will be added to the community for traffic, children, schools, sewer, septic? And obviously, it's going to be part of the city. Those are my questions, if we have answers, please.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The structures will be constructed of wood, both the one and the two stories. The cottage term is something we're using to try and differentiate between all the family apartment and then the single-family residential dwellings that folks are used to seeing. As far as the traffic goes, so the project, of course, went through full DRC, which includes city staff, Osceola County, which includes traffic review of both agencies. Our traffic study didn't require traffic signals. We were not requested to install traffic signals at either of the intersections with Turtle Creek and Preserve at Turtle Creek. As far as school bus access and such, that's, I think, more of a school board issue, I imagine, as to how they'll operate the school pickups, depending on where the kids are and how many kids there are per community. And I'll, I'll add, what, what may impact that is since we will be connecting vehicularly to Lakeside at Satia, there may be options for pickups within that community. But again, that's, that's something that's up to the school board.
And what's the timeframe for, for that connection?
That would be occurring during construction. When the community is built, we're doing the two connection points, South Narcusi, and that would also connect to Satia, depending on when their infrastructure is ready.
Thank you very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen.
I just want to mention one thing that I'm not comfortable with is on item number 12 in the 16 findings, which is the proposed change will be a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property in accordance with existing regulations. In the response, it says future development will be required to provide connectivity and road improvements that will enhance accessibility, economic development and recreational opportunities in the area as necessary. And so that's, that's really what's holding me back on this one is just that we don't have the connectivity yet and that we only have entrance and exit onto Narcusi Road.
What's the timeline of the project?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sorry. So yeah, just to clarify, I know the plan doesn't show up, but we will be connecting to Lakeside at Satia. So our two access points that are in the neighborhood, there's a curb cut that goes to the east and then a curb cut that'll go to the north. Both of those will connect to Lakeside at Satia subdivision roadways that were required to stub out in certain areas at our property boundaries. We're going to connect into those and it'll follow their roadway network wherever it may go. So when we build our internal infrastructure, we're going to connect, if their stub outs are ready, even if they're not, we're building ours and they could connect to us or vice versa. And then we'll also have the connection points to South Narcusi. So we will have the connectivity throughout into the other neighborhoods that'll occur as we start site construction.
In the timeline?
Timeline, if we're able to get through approvals this year, I imagine we would be starting construction in 2025, whatever your, next year is.
Any other questions or concern amongst yourselves? I will entertain a motion. Did you, ma'am? Yes, look for you.
Ma'am, anybody that wishes to speak, come on up to the podium, identify yourself.
Do you have one, ma'am?
Yes, we will hear your comments, thank you.
We'll hear you, call it what you name.
And I'm not nervous, I'm freezing.
Yes.
Betty Damke, 4776 Hidden Heights Trails St. Cloud. I do not live in Turtle Creek, but I live directly across. I live within a half a mile of this proposed development. Most of what I have to say, he's already covered. So pardon me if I'm redundant, but a couple of points that have come up since he did speak. I do know that now, of course, Lake Stalea is, has been approved by the city. From what I see, because I go down Lily and Lee quite a bit, they're pretty close to being ready to start. This development will have its connections with Lily and Lee. And as far as school buses, see Rivercrest, Lake Stalea, all of those developments along that, the school buses pick up and drop off on Lily and Lee, not on 15, on that side of the highway. So at least that's my understanding at this point. I'm not on the school board, so I don't know what's going to happen in the future. But I strongly urge you to approve this community. This proposal, it offers a high-scale, well-maintained and managed community, to your point. For, they call them cottages, I call them villas, and I'll tell you why in a minute. For demographics that are desiring to downsize, professionals that prefer to rent versus own and those saving for future ownership. Many successful professionals, and my grandson living in Turtle Creek renting right now is one of those, prefers to rent versus than to own because that allows him more free time and resources to do other things. Not everybody wants to own a home. As for me, I live on one acre. I have a 2,500-square-foot home that right now, as far as property values, is according to Zillow, $550,000. I'm at a point in life where I need to start thinking about downsizing. I'm 80 years old, I can't keep it up much longer. Nanette knows. I, I would rather live in a mobile home or camper than to go into a three- or four-story apartment building where I have people over me, under me and all around me. I have been to the community that they have in Melbourne. I had a tour, the developer was kind enough to take myself and some of us on a tour. This is a quality community, it's not. When we say rental, so many times that brings up a negative image. And I think we need to reevaluate our image on this. This will be a quality community. Not only do, will Eden continue to own it, they will manage it. And that's the difference between a single-family suburban type of home where it can be bought and just rented out with no management criteria. We need to rethink how we view rentals.
Did somebody? That meant your time was up.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Again, I just, I have viewed this community. And yes, I would definitely live in it with no problem, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, if anybody else says, "Fill out an application hasn't been heard." I will finally close it for public comments again. Okay, now we'll entertain any other questions from yourselves or a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion.
I was just going to say, are you ready for a motion or are you ready for a comment?
Yes, sir, I'm ready for a motion. If there's no more comments amongst yourselves.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-39, 2024-40.
I think we have to do them separate.
We're going to be doing them one at a time.
2024-39, based on 16 findings within land development code.
Second.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Your pass is 4-1.
Can I get a motion now on ordinance number 2024-40?
Make a motion to approve, recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-40, based on the 16 findings within land development code.
Does that motion also include the conditions that our staff had included in there?
With conditions, recommend approval with conditions. Ordinance number 2024-40, based on the 16 findings within land development code.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
It's a no for me.
Thank you very much for your time. Next ordinance will be ordinance number 2024. Next ordinance will be ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-four. ANX twenty-four dash zero 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 four. And we'll also be hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-five, CPA twenty-four dash zero 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 six. And final ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, PUD twenty-four dash zero 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 four.
Good afternoon, council members, planning commission members. I'm practicing for next month. My name is Dag Marie Segarra. I'm the deputy director for the community development. The item in front of you is for an annexation request, and a complaint amendment request, and a PUD amendment request for the Live Oak Lake community. This community is located south of Isle of Bronson Memorial, west of Nova Road, and east of Mose Vine. Staff recommendation is approval. The existing future land use is low-density and medium-density residential of county. The proposed future land use is medium-density residential city. The existing zoning of the property is PD County, which is also Plan Development Unit. Then the proposed zoning is Plan Unit Development City. The development is compatible with the surrounding area, and there is no adverse impact into the city facilities. This is a depiction for the annexation proposal. As you can see, the location of the subdivision is adjacent to the west of boundary, to the city limits of the city of St. Cloud. This annexation request is an encumbrance annexation that was signed by the developer of the subdivision. Here, so the, this is funny today. This is a depiction of the future land use map and the zoning map. The zoning end will remain PUD, and the future land use will change to medium density. As a little background, in the request for the annexation, it's contiguous and reasonably compact and above the city limits to the west, and this notice of encumbrance was signed by Vivek Investment Corp. and executed on August seventeen of two thousand and sixteen. So what is an notice of encumbrance? A notice of encumbrance is a recorded covenant that is recorded in the public records of Osceola County, and it remains connected to the property. When the city of St. Cloud provides, when do we sign one of these? So it signs when the city provides water and sewer services to properties that are in the Osceola County, but they are located within the joint planning agreement area. Once a property signs this encumbrance, it allows the city to process a voluntary annexation to bring the property into the municipality. And the terminology of voluntary is terminology from the Freudian statues, although many residents here tonight may not feel like this is a voluntary, but we're utilizing the process of a voluntary based on the statues. The encumbrance continues to be valid even when the property is sold or transferred. What are some of the benefits to being in this wonderful city? Well, you're going to receive a higher quality of service, a local government that has accountability, local representation, and local making decision. And also, we are business-friendly. We also have a high-quality public safety with low insurance rates. We have shortened responses for police and fire, and we have some parks capital, more park capitals than the county, and our city residents receive discounts for some of our parks. So this is what everyone wants to know, how this is going to affect my pocket. As you can see a comparison in this slide between the unincorporated Osceola County and the city of St. Cloud. In the green, there is an add valorem to the count, to the city, of five point eleven twenty-eight, that currently the residents of Live Oak do not pay because they live in Osceola County. Once they get annexed into the city, they will be paying this additional add valorem tax. But in exchange, currently in the green, the residents of Live Oak, they pay in emergency medical services because the city is the one that provides those services, and they pay one point zero eight eight two mileage, add valorem rate. Once they get into the city, that fee will go away. The other discount that the residents of Live Oak will receive is a solid waste savings once they're in the city, of an approximate, in an assessment of a property that is an approximately three hundred and sixty thousand median SS value, what staff, we did an assessment value on the median of all of the residents, so a three sixty, three hundred and sixty thousand was the median assessment for property appraisers. So we cannot make an assumption that there's going to be a saving of three hundred and twelve dollars in sixty-three or eighty-three? I can't see well. Sixty-three. A cents. So what is going to be a difference? Yes, there will be a difference in the taxes, in the taxes for the properties that are going to be annexed into the city. The property, for more detailed assessment of how it's going to affect each individual lot, they're going to have to make their own calculations because this assessment does not include home states exemptions or other exemptions that a particular homeowner may have. So it's very difficult for the city to do individual assessment. We can only do an assessment as a median and as a whole, and everyone can then do their exemptions. So I just want to make clear that although there is an increase in your taxes, once you apply your exemptions as it applies to you, the amount that is showing here of one thousand one hundred and forty-three and some change might be lower, but at the same time, it might be higher. It all depends on the assessment on the property. Now, this is in line with the city's strategic goals from the city council. The city council has directed staff to conduct a series, a project, to conduct a series of annexations to bring properties such as Live Oak into the city, since we're providing services.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry to cut you off, but before you get too far away from the taxes, my question was going to be, so normally, the property appraiser, they cap the increases at two percent per year, right? But that would not apply here, right? This would be an increase, as soon as they get annexed, the increase would occur immediately, right? The next tax year.
The next tax year. That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
That's my turn.
Sorry.
Okay. So this is an initiative by the city council that's directed staff on a project to annex and encompass properties and enclaves as well. Later in this year, you will see annexations that are enclaves as well, and this is the first of an encumbrance annexation project. We held a community meeting with the citizens. I know it's not in the slide, but we did hold a community meeting with the citizens on June eleventh. We had approximately twelve in attendance present and another fifteen in Zoom. There was very, a lot of discussion, a lot of good questions, and we tried to answer as efficiently as possible. We advised them about the meeting tonight, and we also advised them at the July eighteen city council meeting. New notifications will be sent to the community since the original city council day was July eleventh. Now, it's been changed to July eighteen, so, but we will send new notifications. So the zoning of the property will remain a PUD. We are going to adopt and accept the already-approved plans from the county. As I stated before, it's a hundred and seventy-eight point twenty-six acres with a total of three hundred and twenty-nine dwelling units already all built, and the density is at three point eighty-three dwelling units per acre. As I said, it's already built out, and no new development is expected in connection to this application. And if I didn't say this before, the city is the applicant. Here's a depiction of the approved master plan that was approved by Osceola County, which the city will adopt with the annexation and the plan unit development. It is staff recommendation to approve this annexation and request for comprehensive plan amendment and PUD, and it is requested of this commission to approve as well, of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-four, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-five, and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash forty-six. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So Dagmar, to understand simply for me, we annex into the city, and the council's probably saying things like, "We're providing those services anyway." We annex into the city, therefore, there is a slight increase in tax collection that the city can receive, which the city would then turn around and utilize for improvement in roads and any of the other things that we need money to do on behalf of the city.
Correct.
Now, was it a given that the annexations are supposed to happen between the county and the city, or?
I'm sorry.
I said, is it a given? I thought, I feel like one time there was a discussion on the fact that there were certain areas that were supposed to be, you know, annexed from the county over to the city due to locations or something.
And that's correct, and that's the project that we are working currently. Now, we are, this is just the first one, the first community, but you're going to be seeing more communities as the year goes by.
Are the people that buy these homes, are they told that this is going to happen when they buy the homes?
So at the, at the, at the community meeting, that was a question. When you buy a property, the Realtor is required to disclose any information that pertains to the property. This type of documentation typically are given with your title or your closing papers. But as we know, who's going to read a three hundred-page package?
This development's been around for quite some time, too, right?
Approximately, I believe, in two thousand and seventeen, I believe.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was longer than that.
That maybe the approval from the county was prior to that, but as far as build-out, I believe that one of the last built residents was around twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, I believe.
So the actual, the actual encumbrance is on the deed?
The actual encumbrance, yes, is on the deed of the property. Correct.
The only thing I'll say in protection of real estate agents and Realtors and people is that unless somebody owns a piece of property, you can never guarantee or say what is going to. So Russell, to your point, homeowners, when they buy, you don't know, unless you own the properties around you, you can never say for sure what's going to happen. Oh, it's wetlands, so nobody will ever build back there. You don't know that.
No.
You can never say that definitively. So your properties, if you want to protect anything that a person buys, then you should buy up all the property around you, and then you can control what's going to happen to it. Now, in this case of the city, we do know that our city is growing. We've never stopped anybody else from coming. They didn't stop me in seventy-two, come from Pennsylvania, where everybody else is coming from. We're growing, and this is just kind of the growing pains of our city. And it doesn't always feel good, but it's also all for one and one for all. So I think that the council has to do this. I think they're doing their homework. It just is never going to feel all perfect, but it's what we have to have.
Well, this increase feels awfully high, though, to me. I mean, if you break it down, and I know you did averages, and it's hard to know how every person would be affected, but on average, this is a hundred dollars extra a month on somebody's mortgage, right, that they're already paying, you know, homeowner's insurance and things like that. But I just, it's hard for me to understand why it's so high. I mean, I know it's calculated based on our millage rate and all that.
Because your taxes have gone up, too. I mean, everybody's had.
Well, no, I mean, mine have, well, the St. Cloud millage rate's been the same, at least since twenty seventeen, so it hasn't gone up. But for that much of an increase, in my home, I mean, you know, I guess I'm comparing it to what I pay in taxes, you know, it seems awfully high of an increase to me.
We, if I may. We, when we did, when we revisited the assessment, because we were wondering the same thing, and what we discovered is that the assessment for this, particularly this community, we don't know why, but particularly for this community, property appraisers, and let me say that again, property appraisers, assessment, is pretty high on these properties. Like I said, for a median on the, on the development that has over two hundred units, that's pretty high. We recognize that. But that is, as Miss, Member Grisby said, is part of the increasement that has happened in Osceola County in general.
Has there ever been any discussions by the council about sort of a metered or a slower integration of the fees when we have an encumbrance agreement like this, an annexation, rather than just a sudden, you know, you're going to be annexed into the city, so here's your new tax rate, your new add valorem tax rate, you know what I mean? Has there ever been any discussions about an incremental increase or what that would look like? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not aware if there has been any such conversation, but we definitely can take that comment and advise to the council prior to the eleventh, seven eighteen city council meeting.
Okay.
Just a comment, too, but I mean, you think about all of the times that their services have been provided where there was no payment for it, right? I mean, just thinking about that, for all of the times that, you know, the city is responding and providing the services, fire, police, you know, whatever, right? So, I mean, I...
Does the city provide the services for the...
They do through an inter-local agreement that they have with the fire and police.
Do they provide police? I know that it was fire, the police, too.
Whoever's going to be able to respond, the most efficiently, so it's hard.
So we've still been providing the services and not getting paid for them?
And water and sewer as well.
Well, but the water and sewer, though, they would be paying for that in their utilities, right? Or you're saying just the add valorem taxes that would help?
Absolutely.
Yeah, if they're getting utilities from Toho, they're paying for the utilities they're getting, right? Are we doing public comment on this one?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be opening up for public comments. I have a sheet here, Ms. Teresa.
Hold on to your seats, kids.
Apologize that it took us so long to get to you.
Yeah. My name is Teresa Jopsey. I live at twenty-one sixty-one Burr, please, don't, every time I talk about that, say that again, lady, Burr Oak Boulevard in St. Cloud, the new developer area of Live Oak Lake. And we're talking about here about taxes, and what, there's, it's always taxes. And when we got this letter from you guys, from, where was your letter? We got the letter notice, I should say, about annexation, I went, holy shemoly, what is this all about? I'm like confused, like you were saying, too, so many lists of things to pay, and we had now an increase is going to be of property tax due to facts of this, St. Cloud is now going to take over some of Osceola County. That's how I'm, maybe I'm wrong when I'm saying it, but that's how I'm figuring it out. All of a sudden, St. Cloud wants a little moolah. Fine, it's okay, but it's coming out of our pockets, this moolah. And they have to understand that we're all, basically in Live Oak Lake, we're all senior citizens, and we have a fixed income, and we go according to a budget, everybody has their own budget. And when we get these high rates, they're saying about this one, an example, they said here, "A property with taxable value of four hundred thousand dollars located in unincorporated Osceola County will have a total property tax of five thousand five hundred eighty-five point nine six." The same property located within St. Cloud city limits will have a total property tax of seven thousand two hundred and three point... will have a total property tax of seven thousand two hundred and three point eighty cents, or an increase of twenty-nine percent increase. I go, holy shemoly, that's a lot of hay. And I said, I just want you to be aware of this. That's why I'm here. I mean, all this, you know, all the Doc Mira, Mira was saying about all these things about we have to know. But let's go down to basics. Let's find out people here. We, 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 stuff, you know, it's too much, money, 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 money. And it's coming out of our pockets, and everything's getting so much increase, increase, increase. You have to be aware, go within the means. And also addicts going into and addicts coming over Osceola County. I was so happy I was announcing, I'm only here five years, people. I, I have, I'm learning very slowly about everything. I'm not gelling with Florida as well, but I'm trying. And then when this hits you, you go, my God, I'm from New York, honey, taxes there, oh, my God. Forget about I've come down here, and, well, it's following me, you know? And I don't know about your history, but I remember taxation, representation, it's tyranny. And I wanted to let you know, I'm representing almost all of us in, we're in the pool, we're talking, about so much what they're doing to us. I just, I don't know. And having us at St. Cloud going over Osceola County, I was in Queens, that was my county, and I was ozone park, Queens, New York. So, I'm here, St. Cloud, that's where they put it, St. Cloud, in Florida, right? There's no like in-between like I have up in Queens. But I have to make you realize to be a little bit understanding about where we're coming from, you know? That's what I mean. Be considerate of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My first time.
You did great.
Mr. Richard.
Stop me. I've been told by my wife to be nice. My name's Richard Jobsey. I live at twenty-one sixty-one Burr Oak Boulevard. It's in the county. And the veterans that I've been talking to, and there's several of us in the community, we're, and we're all retired people. We're living on fixed incomes. This tax is ridiculous. We drive at times down New York Street or Avenue, whichever you want to call it, and there's two bad potholes in it, and you just made it that way. By putting in cobblestones is unhealthy and unsafe. And it hasn't even been, what, three, four years yet? And it's already got two bad potholes in it? So, if you're gonna do that to the center of town, what are you gonna do to our community? You know, I'm to the point where I think the city should cut the pay for you and give it back to the people for all the money that you're wasting. You're not doing things properly. You're not taking care of the infrastructure first and then building. You're, you're building first, and the heck with the, the traffic problems, the safety problems and other things. I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel. And I'm gonna be point-blank with you. You know, being a vet, I've had enough. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, but I, I do want to remind you that as the planning commission, we are volunteers.
And we're an advisory board.
We're just an advisory board to the city. So, just let you know that we're not taking any money from the city. We're here of our own volunteer time.
Who's next?
Next person, Johnny in Australia. They messed up, step, okay.
May I just ask?
This is Michael Joffe?
Yeah, just ask if anybody's left to speak on this case.
Anybody else that's gonna speak on this case that's filled out a form? Come on up.
Good afternoon, good evening, I should say. My name is Lee Addison. I live at Live Oak Lake. It appears that this whole proposal is already like a done deal already, you know? And I just don't understand how, you know, all this could be implemented, you know, post facto, or now we have to just, you know, accept it. Like, when we moved here and we filled out paperwork, there was nothing indicating that this would, would go on, you know, into force, you know?
Speaking to the mic, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
Could you, could you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
No, could you hear me before?
Barely, just go ahead and repeat yourself again.
So, if you can't hear me from the beginning, just let me know, okay? Okay, so, what I'm saying, it seemed like this is a done deal here, you know? When we moved here, we filled out paperwork and everything, and there was nothing indicating that this would actually, you know, be taking place, if you will. Second, add the add the law of tax, you know, how does that affect our overall taxes?
Yeah, sir, this is, this is public comment, but the commission's not gonna respond to questions from the community. It's willing to take your comments and public comments all, you know, as long as you've provided the form that you turn in. But the commission's not here to respond to questions, but to take your comments, they certainly will.
Okay, so who is here, or when will someone be responding to questions?
Well, this, this, all of these matters will come before the city council on July eighteenth. Is that right? So, this issue of the encumbrance annexation, the land use, and the zoning will all be presented to the city council on the eighteenth of July. This commission is here to make recommendations tonight to the city council. It's an advisory commission, and it's here to take your, happy to take your comments and your feedback, which it's receiving.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And if you, if you didn't fill out a form, if you, you did, okay, that's great. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, we will be closing public comments. Any comments amongst yourselves?
Well, I mean, I definitely sympathize with these residents, and, you know, I think that these encumbrance agreements are important because I, I think that we do need to start getting some of the ad verum taxes from some of these areas. And if they sign the encumbrance agreement when they accepted water and sewer and utilities, I think that it's important to honor that. However, I do think, and I hope that some of the members of city council are watching this meeting or do watch this meeting, I know that they, some of them do. I think that for things like this, we need to find a way to incrementally increase these fees, right? It's the same thing with the stormwater fee. We saw over a hundred percent increase in that last year. And, I mean, that's, that's my position on it, and I think that, for now, I'm, I'm gonna recommend that we vote no on it because I want them to watch this and figure out, hey, how do we, how can we do this in a better way? I mean, it's hard times right now for everybody, right? The, the, with inflation, with home insurance costs. And I would, I would not want to be part of some, an organization or a city or whatever that increases people's mortgage by a hundred or more dollars a month, you know, when times are so hard. I mean, that's just my position. I do think there's a way to do it incrementally, but, I mean, what do you guys think? That's my opinion on it.
I, I, I would normally say that we need to annex, we need to do this. I understand the logic behind it a hundred percent. But I love your point about that, that if, by, by not approving it from this commission, we are elevating it for the city council to consider some other options. But I also think that, and this is probably hindsight, the county put us in this position a lot by all of the things that they didn't do when they were supposed to do. And I think that we're kind of stuck now as our community is growing so much more. And we have to come up and be maybe a little more creative. So, I would agree with that, that I, as an idea of why we would maybe not move.
I see so many pockets of county properties in the city that are just sitting there that we're gonna have to eventually annex also.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be an upcoming issue a lot.
Yes.
I mean, if you look at the city of St. Cloud, city limits, and you look at how many areas of unincorporated Osceola County are inside of that, I think this is an issue that's gonna be continually coming up in the next several years. And that's why I'm thinking that this is kind of an eye-opener, that we need to figure out, how are we gonna handle this so that we're not doing this to several communities? And it's a shock, you know what I mean?
Right, I wouldn't have guessed on how the taxes would change so much. So, agreed, and I think it's a great idea for the unincorporated areas to become annexed in, but I think the transition plan could probably use a little more work.
Right, right.
We can, there's always the motion and with the recommendation, either which way you want to go. We can move forward that way. It's all up to you, I mean, that's what we're here for. See what recommendations we can give the city council.
Yeah, this is, this is a, this is a volun, as I understand it from staff, this is a voluntary annexation through an encumbrance.
Right.
So, it's, you know, it's a little bit awkward for the commission tonight, I guess, and with the public comment here being respectful of the feedback from the community. But it's an encumbrance that's been in existence and was in existence at some point in time, which now has become ripe to bring to the commission, onto the council for the issues of annexation, the land use, and then the zoning. And here we are. Y'all are, it's, 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 when you talk about the, the affectation on the property owners, certainly there's an affectation in terms of the millage rate and what they will face when the next tax roll comes around. It doesn't have anything to do with the mortgages that the individual property owners have in terms of that. Those things are a personal agreement between the mortgagee and the mortgagee, or that has, has nothing to do with that. It's just gonna be the.
Well, what I meant by that was most people put money in escrow as part of their mortgage payment, and that escrow typically is what pays for their homeowner's insurance. That's all I meant. I wasn't trying to generalize and say that it was included in your mortgage.
I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I, but thank you for clarifying.
Okay, but, you know, it just goes back to the, the analysis that the commission will have to make about the benefits that when you come into the city, you're gonna, there's gonna be an expense that's gonna come along with that, or I guess the benefits and obligations that roll with that. And that's up for, you know, you all now to recommend on this encumbrance. I don't, I don't, unless there's some legal aspect that you've identified that would preclude you from recommending approval, I don't know what it would be. You know, but that's, that's what you all have to do. Your guide is, is to go with what's been presented by, from staff, staff report, and whether the criteria is through the Land Development Code have been met. If they've been met, you know, you need to make your recommendations accordingly.
Can you, Deckmar, can you agree with planned unit development, zoning, comprehensive plan amendment, and not annexation? Or does it not make sense? They all have to go together, so I don't understand. So, the encumbrance statement that council is bringing up is something that was agreed upon prior, right? But not to specific places? Like this Live Oak wasn't a specifically, was it specifically drawn out and into that encumbrance agreement?
So, the way the encumbrance annexation, the encumbrance notices, or the notice of encumbrance works is that if a developer is going to build within the joint planning agreement area, and they're not abutting the city limits, they have to enter into this agreement in order to obtain water and sewer. Because the Toho Water, when is, if the city owns facilities, provides that service. So, in order for the, for that developer to obtain the water and sewer, they have to enter into that agreement. Once a property is abutting the city limits, which is, that's the case today, then that means that it qualifies for that, for the enactment of the, and the notice of encumbrance. There are a lot of pockets, yes, a lot of what we call enclaves in the city. And that's part of the project that we're gonna be working as the year goes, moves forward. We're going to take care of the ones that they were supposed to be annexed in two thousand seventeen. You're gonna see that around September. And then you're gonna see another one big comprehensive that is gonna clean out the map before, by around November. That's the goal of the planning department as directed by the city manager's office and the city council. But that's the way that no, those notice of encumbrances work. In order for the, the subdivision to exist, that agreement needed to be signed.
So, if anybody was to buy a house, you came down here from Ohio, and you buy a house somewhere, unless you deeply go in and read the city ordinances and encumbrances and learning all about your piece of property, you're basically saying, I love this house, I like this land, I'm gonna buy this house. All of those things existed, they were there. We just might not have known about them, and now they're coming into fruition.
Well, I, I, I do think, I do think that it's, the encumbrance was, is part of what goes with the deed. It runs with the land, it runs with the property. It's a, the, the property owners are on constructive notice when they come in. Those, those encumbrances are not hidden.
Not hidden, but still, again, the general public of a person does not, does not absolutely dig that deep. And that, I'm not saying that that's not their fault, but it's just, it is a way for us to help community educate our residents that this is what, and I think that, it's just an aha moment. It's a really big aha moment for me, so it's gonna continue to be an aha moment. And I think that that goes back to Phil's point where we have to help educate that it is, it's a reality. And, and just because you didn't know about it doesn't mean anybody cheated you or anybody did anything wrong. It's just that you didn't know about it.
Yeah, and that, and that's why part of this project, we, the annexation, encumbrance annexation project, we are doing community meetings prior to the public hearings to educate the public, to answer those questions as best as we can. With the, with the notion that that agreement exists, and the city council is the final determination board.
All right, I changed my mind. I don't agree with you anymore.
Well, regardless on whether we vote yes or no on this, or for, or approval or denial, I think that my comment stands that I think that
It does.
the city council has a responsibility to try to figure out, you know, ultimately, these are gonna become city residents, so we don't want them coming into the city disgruntled. We want to figure out a way to make things a smooth transition.
Right, but we also also have to help people remember that it is our individual responsibilities to learn as much as we can. We only choose to learn it, what, to a certain point, and, and maybe we can help people to be more educated.
We're here to make the recommendation. We could make the recommendation noted and move forward.
We can add that at the end after.
Add it up to the motion.
Are you ready?
All right, if there's no any other discussions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number two zero two four dash four four based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
Would you like to add anything to that motion? Okay. Do I have a second or another motion?
Uh, I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four to one passes?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, we'll be now taking a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-five.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-five based on the sixteen findings of the Land Development Code.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
No for me.
Okay.
This passes four to one, is that?
Yes, sir. Then the next one will be ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-six.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-six based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No for me.
Passes four one?
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that we'd like to recommend to city council on behalf of our commission that they look into maybe how to mitigate some of the costs for residents or help them understand it a bit better.
Okay, last, uh, ordinance is twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven, CDA twenty-four zero 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 four.
Good evening, commission. Tisha Manning is owner manager for the city of St. Cloud Community Development. Before you is an ordinance for the historic preservation overlay of the Land Development Code. The historic preservation overlay is basically there to protect, restore, help buildings be restored and encourage reuse of resources within our historic district. And it, it also helps for us to have compatibility. It, it serves as, you know, a board that, an overlay that also helps when it comes to new construction as well as redevelopment of the area, just so that we do have a historic district in the city of St. Cloud. So currently, right now, we approved, we applied for a small matching, small matching grant from the Division of Historic Resources. And before you last month was the Historic Preservation Plan, that was part of this matching grant. So part of the requirements is that we also update our ordinance to go along with that Historic Preservation Plan that was presented. So this is the ordinance that we're presenting to you tonight, in which we're gonna make some updates to the ordinance so that it is uniform with the Historic Preservation Plan that was presented previously. So currently, right now, the St. Cloud Historical Survey was completed. The latest survey was nineteen ninety-three, we had a new survey completed in two thousand twenty, which we have not adopted. And that is part of this ordinance that we have tonight. Some things of accomplishments is we had the erection of the historical markers. We had, we sent to the National Registry for some historic places in two thousand and nineteen as well as some documents for properties that were built before nineteen seventy. So the proposed updates to our ordinance is to add language that reflects the adoption of the Historic Preservation Plan. We're also going to adopt the two thousand twenty district survey that was completed in October. We're gonna update language in the current ordinance, instead of referring to planning and zoning, it's gonna refer to community development, as well as we made an update to our minor and major review process that's gonna streamline the process and it's gonna help our citizens understand better where they're at in the process. So previously, there was no real documentation, you submitted for a certificate of appropriateness, we reviewed it and we responded. Now the process is going to be more streamlined there, as we do with all of our other development review processes. When it comes in, we're gonna provide comments, we're going to have things documented to show the applicant this is the stage in the process where they're at, and we're gonna help facilitate more approvals prior to it being presented to the Historic Preservation Board. Staff has reviewed the ordinance, we made the updated changes, so we do recommend approval. And we are asking that the planning commission also recommend approval for the updates that I have outlined for the ordinance of two thousand twenty-four dash forty-seven for the Historic Preservation Plan overlay. And I am available if you have any questions, because the city is the applicant on this.
Any questions for the city?
How old is considered historical in the city?
So fifty years, so.
So I'm considered, since I've lived in St. Cloud for fifty years, I could be considered historical?
You're historical.
Okay.
So to, to your point, member Griswold, each year, more properties become eligible for historic preservation.
My home's a hundred and some what years old.
So does this expand the current district that we have?
Um, no, because the current district, the way it's set up on our overlay, what they did is they just went out and surveyed those properties to, you know, find out what properties are historical, and they submitted it for the National Registry. There is currently another survey underway that is looking to expand. So where our current district stops, it is surveying the properties, I believe from Ninth Street, but don't quote me, I can't remember, from Ninth Street more toward the lakefront. So each year, we're gonna try to survey more properties to possibly expand the district.
Okay.
Right.
Any other questions? I'll open it for public comments. No public comments, we, we, we made them go away, okay? Any other comments amongst yourselves? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number two zero two four dash four seven. Is it based on the sixteen findings? I didn't think so, but I can't find it.
I have a first motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Pass it. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.